Now, how do I stop the recording?
Pause.
Five fifty-nine.
Okay, six o'clock. Welcome to the Holiday Island City Planning Commission Public Hearing Agenda. On October tenth, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock, we'll get started. I call this meeting to order. Ron Keyes.
Yeah.
We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America. And still be public, which is saying, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Secretary, would you call it? Roll, please.
Commissioner House?
Here.
Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner Dumas here. Commissioner Ralph?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have a forum. Uh, welcome to our public attendance. And those on Zoom. Is it Zoom or?
Yes.
Yep, Zoom. Okay. Uh, we can read the purpose for this meeting, Mr. Secretary.
The Arkansas statutes require the planning commissions hear public comments and a public hearing before conditional use permits and changes to zoning regulations can be approved. This public hearing is for those purposes to hear comments regarding only the following conditional use applications and zoning regulation documents being considered by the city planning commission for approving and recommending to the city council for adoption. We have two sessions, one regarding conditional use application for a residence at one oh six Holiday Island Drive for use as a short-term rental. And the second will be regarding amendments to the planning and zoning regulations and adding a new district called DP, deficient property. Continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have some rules for our public hearing and how it will be conducted. Public hearings must be conducted in an affair orderly manner so as to allow citizens' opinion to be expressed directly to the planning commission that is making zoning policy decisions. Individuals wishing to speak shall approach the podium, state their full name and address, and make their comments. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comment. If multiple individuals have similar comments on the same item, then the chairman may limit further similar repeating comments. Individuals who submit documents at the hearing shall identify each document. Each document submitted shall be made part of the official record of the hearing. Documents submitted prior to the public hearing will be provided to commissioners to be made part of the official record of the hearing. Reading documents in the record are subject to the three-minute time limit. After all comments have been made, the chairman will close the hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, further comment on this topic will not be entertained. If the planning commission meeting follows immediately after the closing, the public hearing to deliberate on the hearing comments and to consider further action on this topic. No public comments will be accepted on this topic during that meeting. Commissioners may discuss an item and ask questions of the presenters from the public hearing.
Thank you. We'll begin with session one. Do I have any public comments?
That's regarding the conditional use application?
Yes.
Or?
For, for term rentals?
Yes.
Any public comments? Does our applicant want to make any comments?
Well, he's on, but I don't think so.
Can you hear me?
His mic is muted. Andy, if you'd like to say something, you could unmute your mic.
Um, can you hear me?
I think we can pick you up. I'm hoping we can.
Um, I'd just like to say thank you for your.
Would you like to say something?
I'm, can you hear me? Hello?
It appears that he's speaking, but for whatever reason, I'm not hearing it. It's not muted. My microphone is on, or my, my speaker's on.
Hmm.
Yeah. How is mics turned on?
I, I'm trying to speak, but it's not allowing me, um, I guess. Let me try through my phone.
Hmm. It's playing. Well, I can't hear him. He's got his hand up. How do I see those notes? I'm sorry, we can't hear you, Andy, for whatever reason.
Then I guess it's not.
Yeah.
You have to call your cell phone.
Yeah, Andy, you want to try that? Try my cellphone. My number is seven one two two zero four nine 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 two. And I can put you on speaker. Oklahoma. Hello?
Hi, Andy.
Hi.
Sorry about that guy. I was speaking, I guess it wasn't going to.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm sure the problem's on our end.
Um, just like to say thank you for allowing me to have this hearing. I'm really excited to work with City of Holiday Island and to be, um, moving forward and making sure the city lasts a long time, that everything is done appropriately.
Yes, we appreciate that. Thank you. Don, I don't think there's anyone to comment opposing it or supporting it.
Are we allowed to ask any questions?
We're supposed to say that for the, the meeting.
Okay.
So, we can.
So you close this portion.
We'll close this portion.
Okay, Andy, if you want to hang around, uh, we're gonna have the regular meeting following this, and, uh, there may be some questions for you.
Uh, we'll do that, and I'll call you back when the questions are. You can call me back.
Okay, or I could leave this running. What's your preference?
Um, I can hear you on the Zoom.
Okay. All right, I'll hang up. Oh, go ahead.
Andy, I just understand that you have been extremely helpful in getting all your documentation here. You know, this is kind of a learning curve for us too, so we appreciate your cooperation.
I'm just trying to make it as easy as I can to understand the, uh, burden of the administration could be quite large.
Thank you for your help.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to session two.
All right.
Regarding amendments to the planning and zoning regulations that in zoning district efficient properties to the zoning regulations. Uh, and we'll take public hearings, uh, public comments at this time. Does anyone have any public comments? Okay.
That's it then.
And we'll close that part. And, uh.
Gavel the, the meeting adjourned.
Do I need a motion for that?
Uh, no, you're in control of the public hearing.
There's our note. Comments from the public, I will adjourn this meeting. Did we open the second one?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I call this, uh, Holiday Island Planning Commission Regular meeting to order, uh, on October tenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we've, uh, had the Pledge of Allegiance already, so we'll forego that. Uh, Mr. Secretary, would you call roll?
Commissioner House?
Here.
Commissioner Childers?
Here.
Commissioner Dumas here. Commissioner Ralph?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We are, we have a forum. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
If it's a move, do I have a second? Second. We have a second? And our motion to approve the minutes.
We need to have a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We'll vote. All of the, all in favor, uh, would you call the roll, please?
This will just be an I and A.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I or A. Uh, all approve for the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries.
Very good.
Uh, I have a motion to approve the minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, special meeting, public hearing, and regular meeting.
I read the minutes of the previous meeting and, uh, correspond back with Mr. Dumas, and I didn't see any problems, so I make a motion to approve.
So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Set it, and we get an eye vote on that. Also, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries.
Good.
Uh, reports. We don't have any, do we have any reports from the expanded committees or special committees? We don't have either one?
Nope.
So we'll pass on that. Do we have any old business to discuss?
None that I brought forward.
Let me ask this question, just for the record.
Okay.
Uh, the past old business, has the date passed for appeal, or has, is that still?
Yeah, the, the action we took, uh, was appealable through, uh, last week, I believe, on a Tuesday with the city council. And there was no action taken.
No appeal.
No appeal was made.
Okay.
And that would have been action that the city council would have had to react to, not us.
Right, okay.
So we, yeah.
So that might have closed.
Yes, well, it's, yeah, the, the issue is, uh, request was denied, and, uh, he has to wait six months to reapply. And for the benefit, uh, Don, for old business, like, if we, uh, worked on something and then we tabled it, that would be in the old business for the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, new business. We will hear the deliberations for public hearing comments regarding conditional use application, giving grade twenty-three zero eight twenty-three from the.
Andy.
Need that, that, that. Uh, we will also consider resolution. Pardon me? Oh, that, that's my own. That, that's doctored up pretty good. Okay. Uh, the second they will consider is resolution H I C P C R twenty-three zero one zero, resolution approving conditional use permit C U P S T R twenty-three zero eight twenty-three zero one for residents at one oh six Holiday Island Drive, U B L eight dash four dash one for use as a short-term rental. And we will consider resolution H I C P C R twenty-three dash zero one one. Resolution approving amendments to the planning and zoning regulations, adding zoning district, uh, deficient property. The fourth thing we will consider is resolution H I C P C R twenty-three dash zero one two, resolution permitting conditional use of short, short-term rentals in the commercial zone, C dash one. We, we will now have public comments.
Well, we're gonna have deliberations. We're gonna talk about the, uh, the application.
Okay.
And exactly.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
All right. We will consider the, uh, applicant application for the, uh, short-term rental at one oh six Holiday Island Drive. Uh, do I have a motion to consider resolution R twenty-three dash zero one zero?
I make a motion that we consider resolution R twenty-three zero one zero. That's why I wanted to paper for the number.
I have a motion to consider that resolution, and do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Discussion. We have discussion.
We want to discuss.
Yes, we have to, we have to deliberate and discuss before, and we have some amendments we may have to make.
We discuss amongst ourselves.
Yes, it's, uh, for the planning commission to talk about, uh, what we're considering.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone have a?
Well.
Anything we consider here?
I think the city council did a really good job when they wrote the resolution for short-term rentals, as far as the items that they put in there to make sure that it's effective for the residents that are living in the area of the short-term rental. But I know that Commissioner Dumas has researched all of short-term rentals much more than probably we have. Have you run across anything that's not in the city council resolution, but we should consider for the conditional use?
Well, other cities have done a lot more and gone a lot further. Um, in our deliberations in the city council, it was limited, or we limited this because of the concerns that happened in another community. Uh, there were regulations in place that a community had put in place, and the city was sued for restricting their ability to conduct business. And the assumptions were made because the decision that the judge made wasn't real clear, that it was probably centered around the limitations they put on it. So the city council of Holiday Island decided to pare it down and make, like, inspections an exception rather than a rule before. And, um, I think inspections was the biggest thing, as I recall, is the biggest objection that was in that ordinance that they had enforced. And they subsequently took those things out and passed their ordinance similar to what we did.
Yeah. Well, reading them, ordinance, the things that came to mind that people have talked to me about is excessive number of cars at the residence, which that seemed to be addressed well in the ordinance, and excessive noise. You know, people don't want to live next door to a party house, and that seemed to be addressed also. So I, in my own mind, I couldn't come up with what you missed, because y'all seemed to have done such a good job, so, but I thought maybe you might have found something else that we, we're, we're sort of setting a standard with this first one.
Exactly. And that was.
I hope our applicant realizes that, so.
And that was the, um, the impetus to get the city council to pass an ordinance so that we knew, had guidance on what to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
To set that precedent.
Have you guys made any input from people that live around short-term rentals?
One thing I noticed was the rules of conduct is incumbent on the homeowner, not the city. So, I guess every, every house that becomes a short-term rental will have their own rules of conduct. And what we think, what we, we think of that is when you talk about noise, be it loud music, dogs barking, fireworks, whatever it is. I guess we're gonna have to assume that those things are covered under the rules of conduct, whoever is the proprietor of that property.
I sort of interpreted it that if there was excessive noise, the neighbors would file complaints. And that that would that could possibly cause someone to lose their conditional use. Is that the way it's supposed to work?
Yes.
Okay. And I knew that another, in another instance, not this particular house, but another instance, there was a lot of concern about, you know, sixteen cars parked in front of the, the house, and how that impacted traffic, and that is a, the major you know, thoroughfare for the community, and, you know, and that's what the fire trucks go in all the time, so we sure.
It's clearly called out in this, that it's all pavement.
That's what I, I.
Safe roadway, there's no parking, so.
Yeah. So I, I said, I thought the ordinance was well done.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Now, I noticed they had, kind of had a little place for an additional car um, at this house, so.
And I don't.
The one on Holiday Island Drive?
Yeah.
I know that house, and I can't remember if that that was always there or not. I just, I just don't remember.
Been there for a while.
That, it's been there for a while, huh? Okay. And next door to it is a short-term rental, I believe. Or at least one or two houses over. I know that.
Randy, your comment about noise and the incumbents or the enforcement, I know there's a there's, uh, someone probably working on a noise ordinance for Holiday Island, so it'll give us some, uh, way to act.
That will ultimately be the biggest complaint we care, because I think the parking is well-covered.
Yeah.
Noise is vague.
Yeah.
What loud noise or music is to warn us, not gonna be necessarily the same to the person next door.
Absolutely.
I, I, I agree. I think the covenants and the, uh, city have done a good job. One that, one that came to mind the other night, if everybody heard the fireworks from afar.
I didn't, of course. I live up here, but.
Right.
I did hear about that.
You know, it happened at midnight, and I'm, that's beside the point, but my, my point is about the fireworks. I got the thing about fireworks and these short-term rentals. We're gonna have people coming in from who knows where, and I'm happy to have them here. But do they know what we're, what our ordinances are regarding fireworks and that type of thing?
We don't have one.
That's right. Now, now, we always put out a sign that says you can last a digit for hours.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're not import, but they're not importable. But this may be our opportunity. We have, and I hear this from a few short-term rentals. I believe they're, I can't say for certain, but I think they're short-term rental on the island periodically throughout the year. Maybe three, four times. And that's, that's fine, but they're not at midnight. But I got the thing about the fireworks, I thought, well, it's not just noise, it's also because we have an area where long about the summertime, we start getting into no, no, no burn, you know, and the fires. And should we put something in our applicant requirements that the, the short-term rentals cannot do fireworks? I'm just wondering about that, because of the neighbor, the noise, the chance of burning that house down or neighboring houses? Or possibly, if you have a, if you have a short-term rental along these, uh, golf courses with the, with the woods behind them, and they shoot something off into the woods, who knows where that's gonna go? So, that, those are my concerns.
And you know what? That absolutely correlates with the concern that I have heard, because I live up by the, really close to the clubhouse. And there's a couple of short-term rentals over on Indian Wells. And what I have heard is those, we do hear fireworks. We even used to hear fireworks, but we do now, you know? And it's, people tell me it's always from the short-term rentals.
Yep.
So.
And that's why I think that's happening on the island also, because the, the neighbors just, they, they, they're gonna focus around the Fourth of July. They're gonna do anything. It's not gonna be in general.
And these people that are on the short-term rentals are on vacation.
Yeah.
They're here to have a good time. We live here.
But I am concerned about the fire danger, very much so. And the, not just for the short-term rental, but the neighboring houses and also the woods.
Uh, I, I think it's an issue that we need to add to, and the city needs to add to their ordinance, nuisance ordinance.
Um, are you saying that this made a blanket ordinance? I'm okay with that.
Yeah. But should. It needs to be blanketed, that's not just.
But doesn't it also need to go into the ordinances for, or these applications for approval?
Yeah.
For rentals.
Well, the way we did in this paragraph E, it says a copy of the nuisance ordinance requirement, so we're requiring that they have a copy of that in their rental. And then there's another sentence in here that says that you're gonna comply with all the ordinances of the city.
Okay.
So.
It needs to be a blanket.
Or. Yeah.
I think it's hard to differentiate between the short-term rentals and what people live here permanently.
I'm concerned about the people that are coming in that don't know our ordinances, and the, the owner of the short-term rental, he's going to comply, but are his renters going to comply?
Well, you could go back and amend that and make it specific on fireworks, but, but we need to have one that's citywide.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why we skipped that out.
You know, it occurred to me at one point, and we'd already done it, so, yeah, it's, it's gonna be an amendment.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, that's.
We have done one that was, yeah.
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 But I, I think we need, need to go to the city and have amend that nuisance ordinance.
Considering that y'all have built everything from scratch, I think you've done an astonishing job. If you have to make a couple of amendments, uh.
So do you want this, you want something in here? We can put it in. It's ours to draft.
Make a recommendation for the city council.
To consider that.
Yeah.
Well, the, the planning commission is, is free to add conditions to.
Well, that's what I.
And suspenders.
Built and suspended.
And suspended.
Yeah.
So put it in both.
And in both.
The city's ordinance, last paragraph says that the planning commission has liberty to add conditions. The ordinance was for the minimums.
I think ninety-nine percent of the people that come here, short-term rental, they're gonna do just fine. You, you're gonna have a few people periodically, and my, my concern once again is during the no burns, when the burn ban is on.
Well, I think, you know, a lot of the stuff that the district put out on fireworks. Yeah, I mean, that's a good starting point. Yeah, uh, it's just, it's just the fact that the district, I mean, it can enforce it.
Yeah.
So I'll ask this question again. Do you want this amended? Include no fireworks?
And then the other question is, do we want to say no fireworks entirely, or as per the high, I said, recommended?
Well, the concern that I have is that case that, that went to court, and the court was based on, or his decision was based on something that says you can't restrict short-term rentals differently than you do residential owners.
Okay.
So when you put an exclusive on no fireworks from short-term rentals, you're making, you're making it exclusive, and so that we're gonna get in trouble.
Yeah, you're right.
I don't want to get in trouble.
And furthermore, some of these fireworks are legal.
You're right.
I mean, kids, little kids like the sparklers, and all that stuff's legal.
Yeah.
But it still comes under that definition of fireworks.
Yeah, most of this, most of the stuff that's legal in Arkansas, pretty, pretty good-sized stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
And so restrictions has been time-wide.
Right.
And I think that's about all you can, I don't think you, you're not gonna.
Well, if the noise part of it is covered under a noise ordinance, and the fire danger should be covered by the fire department, and pose the, when it's a no burn situation.
Well, I think lit is addressed, and he's, he's got it in there, that, that the, in the short-term rules, they have to comply with these city ordinances, so I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm too.
Yeah. And sorry, because they, they limit the, the, the time period and what can.
Yes.
You know, what you can shoot off, so.
But isn't it a bad idea, since we have, like, forums sitting here, to suggest y'all consider that in the future? Because that is something that I have heard from people in the neighborhood. Well, you, you may have heard them overall.
Yeah. It's not, it's not all, it's not short-term rentals always.
No, not at all.
But being a former Yankee and living in the state of Illinois, where all you could have is sparklers, with the train, go to states like Arkansas.
Well, what I did then, as far as, um, our deliberations, I took the header off that said that this could be modified during our meetings, so uh, we're to the point, if we're done with our discussions, we can vote on it.
Make a motion to vote.
That motion's been made, so.
I accept it.
So you just need to.
No, you need to, you need to call the roll.
Call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Childers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, aye. Commissioner House?
Yes.
Commissioner Ralph?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Five ayes, zero noes.
Motion carries.
Resolution passes.
Resolution passes.
He's listening. He, he knows that it's passed. So following this meeting, then, uh, we've got a form to fill out, and um, it requires, um, a signature. I don't know how we're gonna handle that, but Don and I can sign the bottom, and I'll figure out how to get, uh, Andy's signature on it, so he can get in the.
Resolution?
Excuse me.
Yes.
We should have read it before we voted on it. I'm sorry. He had grief.
I'm still learning this stuff.
Well, I'm trying. Yeah, I'm trying to keep him.
You're doing.
Should we back up to do it right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, let's, let's read the, uh, the resolution.
Resolution H I C P C R twenty-three dash ten, the resolution approving conditional use permit C U P S T R twenty-three oh eight twenty-three dash one. I'll bring this up on the screen.
We gotta read all that.
Yep.
You gotta read all of that?
That's what he asked me to do. Whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission has accepted a conditional use application, C U A twenty-three oh eight twenty-three on August twenty-third from Andy Dedgar for property described as Arkansas County of Carroll, City of Holiday Island Lot One, Block Four, Unit Four, also known as U B L eight dash four one, addressed as one oh six Holiday Island Drive, Holiday Island. Whereas U B L eight dash four dash one is now zone number one for lotists in the single-family district. And whereas the purpose of the conditional use application is to permit the use of the residence as a short-term rental. And whereas the H I C P C has provided notification pursuant to Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two by letter mail to the Eureka Springs School Board on September nineteen, and pursuant to A C A fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two by publishing a public hearing notice in the Carroll County News on September nineteen. Whereas pursuant to A C A fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two, the H I C P C has conducted a public hearing on the matter of, and of the conditional use application on October ten to hear public comments. And whereas the H I C P C now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to approve the conditional use permit, C U P S T R twenty-three oh eight twenty-three dash one. Now, be resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Section One, pursuant to the Holiday Island Planning Zoning Regulations. The H I C P C approves Resolution twenty-three dash ten, granting conditional use permit, C U P S T R twenty-three oh eight twenty-three dash one, with the following conditions. A, the applicant shall continue the posting of notice on weatherproof signs provided by the city on the property at one oh six Holiday Island Drive, ensure that the signs remain continuously posted until a final decision is made by the City Planning Commission or made by the city council if the decision is appealed. And B, said permit is non-transferable. Said permit shall be effective for a period of one year from the date of issuance, then reviewed for any violations to these conditions, planning and zoning regulations, and all other ordinances, codes, and regulations of the City of Holiday Island. If compliance has been satisfactory in the sole discretion of the mayor or the mayor's designee, a renewal of said permit for a period of one year may be issued by the mayor or the mayor's designee. And C, proof that the. And C, proof that the applicant is in compliance with the city's solid waste ordinance for trash collection. And D, in the event that a safety complaint is made against the property, an inspection performed by the city code enforcement officer. City Building Inspector, Fire Chief, and/or law enforcement bill will be required. And E, the short-term rental shall be posted within the structure in a clearly, excuse me. Curse your jump. The short-term rental shall have posted in the structure in a clearly visible. Location, a copy of the conditional use permit for short, and address for the local point of contact for the short-term rental. Additionally, recommended placed in an appropriately labeled binder, a copy of the city nuisance ordinance requirements, a copy of the city parking. Ordinance requirements and notice to all persons that guessed local points of contact or property owners may be cited and fined for violations. Of applicable city ordinances. And F, in addition to the restrictions defined in the planning and zoning regulation sixteen, section twenty-one dot oh one. Due to the narrow width of the streets, on-street parking is strictly prohibited. The entirety of the paved surface of the street is considered traffic lanes. Parking in the street right-of-way is limited to the rental property owner's lot. Parking on adjacent vacant lots, whether owned by the rental property owner or not, is prohibited. And G, at no point shall short-term rentals have or be offered for rent as having an occupancy greater than three guests per bedroom. Plus an additional two guests. And H, once any portion of said permit authorization is utilized, all such conditions pertaining to such authorization shall become immediately operative. All conditions relating to or, or limiting the use status or operation of the development. After issuance of an occupancy permit shall be complied with by the applicant or his assigns. I, the applicant shall read, understand, and agree by signing the conditional use permit. C U P D, C U P S T R twenty-three oh eight twenty-three dash one, acknowledgement attachment here. Two as A. Section two, no decision of the City Planning Commission granting this conditional use permit shall become effective. Until after an elapsed period of fifteen days from the date of the City Planning Commission mailing the written response. During this fifteen-day period, an appeal of the decision may be taken to the City Council by filing a letter of appeal. With the city recorded treasure, together with a non-refundable appeal processing fee. The City Council shall hear such appeal and consider all relevant evidence prior to rendering a final decision. The City Council may vote to grant or deny the conditional use permit, past and approved this date. Now we can officially vote.
I, I just have a sidebar comment. You're gonna do that, you're gonna read that a hundred times, but then the next year?
Nope.
We need to come up with another plan.
We. Did you get my email I sent a few minutes ago?
Not a few minutes ago, no.
It was this afternoon. It was coming up on the agenda, but we have, we have eighteen applications to consider in November. And I plan to hand it in as a blanket, and, um, I'll help draft a motion so that we can. Um, read one of these if they're all the same. And if there's exceptions we made for a certain property, we're gonna have to have a, a separate resolution for that property. But if all of them are the same, we can read it once and, and draft a motion that says we're gonna accept them all, boom.
That's good.
With the same text, with the modification of the specifics.
Dawn, isn't that what you were referring to yesterday?
Yeah. So we're gonna have that experience in November.
Wow, we still have a lot to do.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to consider resolution R twenty-three dash zero one two? I'll wait. Thank you, go ahead, second. We have a motion and, uh. We've had our discussion, so I guess we'll have our vote.
Commissioner Childers.
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, aye. Commissioner Howes.
Aye.
Commissioner Ralph.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Five ayes, zero nays. Okay, so now it's adopted, it's approved.
Resolution is, we voted on and adopted, Amber Fried, it adopted.
Okay.
Do we have our public comments on this now?
No, we don't allow public comments, cause we had the hearing.
Okay.
Oh, you're talking about this next agenda item?
Andy wouldn't talk at all.
Oh, he said he would call if he wanted to talk, but, uh, he said he could hear us during, on the Zoom, so.
Okay.
He knows it's approved.
It's been approved, okay.
And again, I'll contact him about getting the document signed.
So we're ready to do.
Efficient properties.
Just introduce the topic and.
Yeah.
Call for motion.
Hey, next thing on our agenda is to consider resolution H I C P C R twenty-three dash zero one one. Resolution approving amendments to the planning and zoning regulations. Adding zoning district D P, deficient property. Will I have public comments on that now, Lynn?
No, um, now you asked for a motion to approve it, and then we have discussion.
We're at the motion part?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we, uh. We just consider or approve?
Yeah, to approve it.
To, I make a motion that we approve. Resolution H I C P C R point three dash zero eleven. Uh. Amending the property zoning regulations and adding a deficient property. Category.
What's the purpose of the deficient property?
We'll get to that when we discuss it. Okay, I second the motion.
Motion being made and seconded. Any discussion?
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, the purpose is because there is a need. Of HICID to create a lot. To allow access to a property that has been isolated by surrounding property owners. State of Arkansas does not permit islands of property, that you have to have access.
Landlocked.
Yes, and they're concerned, the HICID's concern is. That if we don't, if they don't act and create an avenue for this property access. The judge might dictate something that's unfavorable to Holiday Island, to the district. So, this lot is small and is for one purpose. And our current zoning does ha, does not have any way to name it a zone. All lots have to be zoned in the city. So we had to create a zone for it. We picked these words deficient property based on some criteria that's in the, in the, uh. In the resolution and recommended ordinance.
Well Lynn, is this resolution? For one particular property, or does it apply to all, all of the efficient properties, or all properties in Holiday Island?
Once we create a zone, it can be applied to any property.
But right now, it's only particular to one.
Yeah, we, we have a need for one.
We need to put these.
But in the future, it could be on a case by case.
Somebody bought a lot that was landlocked?
It's, it's not HICID property, it's adjacent to HICID.
It's outside the limits.
The only way that they can get access is to go through this piece of property that's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
If you own that property.
And they, uh, I don't even know. But, who owns it?
Um, I didn't know the name, but I could look it up. Someone bought.
Just, we're putting a road through it, and that's it.
So somebody.
Somebody bought a piece of property.
Owns that part that's gonna go, go ahead.
There's a chunk of land like this, and there's a lot line between it. Originally, one person owned them both. The person died, the family sold two lots, two parcels. The guy owns this, says you can't drive through my lot anymore to get to your property, so now it's landlocked.
Yeah.
So if it goes to court, we're gonna lose.
But go ahead and finish. What he's gonna do is, you have to go around.
Instead of going off of Highway twenty-three, a three-quarter mile, he's gonna have to come in through state line, drive three and a half miles to go through our streets to get to it. Or he's gonna drive five miles from Holiday Island Drive to get to it.
Well, will he be able to stay on his own property to get to our roads? Or does he go?
Until he gets to that point. But the concession that he made is he has agreed. Via a deed restriction in perpetuity. That he will only put two houses on this forty acres, it will never be developed, and we want to. Make that happen. It never gets developed, cause then we would have all this traffic going through HICID, we don't want that. So by putting it this way, deficient property says it can't be developed. Right, am I right?
Yeah, the only development is a path and offense, that puts in, that's what we're recommending to the City Council.
It's really a win-win situation to do this.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm, I'm just confused about.
Why anybody would have that?
Here's, here's his land and our road comes up somewhere like here or something, maybe, you draw me a picture if you want to.
There's his, his land.
Yes.
And our road goes like this, and there's a lot right here, and, and I think HICID owns that lot. I, I think it's been.
It's a.
Back to us, right?
It's a parcel that wraps around the lots, that they're going to subdivide and create a lot.
Ah, okay.
I'm gonna, I'll pull it up.
This is the land that he.
This is his, uh, his forty acres, he owns forty acres.
Who owns this piece, this one I'm trying to understand? Who owns that piece?
I don't.
Is this the? Access question?
Yeah.
For that forty acres?
He, he wants to be able to drive through there, but we don't want him to develop that property.
I understand.
And so. By him agreeing to have deed restrictions, we're saying we'll give you access.
Yeah.
Cause if it goes to court, we're gonna lose anyway.
No, I understand, but, but.
Who owns that?
Who owns that?
Yes, I gotta find it for you.
Through him driving through their property to get to our roads, that's.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
The property that's gonna be created is HICID-owned parcel, that they're gonna subdivide and create a lot. It's HICID property now.
It is HICID.
It's HICID's property.
Okay, so we're okay with him driving on our property, okay?
No, they're gonna sell him the lot.
They're gonna sell it?
Yes.
And he's gonna pay an assessment on it, too, that's good.
Okay, that, that's what I was trying to.
He's been extremely amenable.
No. Don't forget it.
I'm trying to find what.
I'm just trying to understand how he's gonna get to our road.
Yeah.
You got it?
It's back in Indian Wells.
Is, if we. Is this gonna make? Set a precedent for anybody that has? Property like that?
Yeah, there'll be a zone that's available, but. Uh, the zoning changes have to come through us in a public hearing for a property to be rezoned. So, it doesn't deny anyone from the request, the ability to request to have it rezoned. It doesn't, doesn't deny anybody, the zone's there to be used, if someone wants it, they can apply for it.
But it has to go through a hearing.
It has to go through us in a public hearing to be approved.
People wanting access to the system and we denied them all and. Bought them and, and. And the guy that bought, the lot above that guy is the one that paid him off, that's the one that should give him access.
I think Suzanne has come up with a very reasonable way to do this because. He'll, he'll eventually maybe build two houses. And he'll pay assessments on one or two lots.
Yeah.
Two lots. And.
They're outside of the.
It was the best way to make a silk purse out of a sow's ear because.
They won't, that's not, that's not within the city yard or district. The, that forty acres. You're not gonna get assessments.
He's gonna pay the assessment on the one road is.
We're gonna, then we're gonna sell it. If I understand it.
That's the way I understand it.
All right.
How can you say something outside of the district?
It's not.
It's not.
It's HICID land. And we're.
I'm trying to find the image so everybody can understand.
It's in the district.
That is silly, apparently we have the deed to that, I mean.
I said that.
I said, I said mess.
Yeah, but this is HICID.
Good grief, it's HICID property, they wanna subdivide and make a small lot.
People access to the road system.
Okay, all right, here we go.
Yeah.
Here's the picture.
Okay.
Control plus, if I can make it bigger.
You wanna go to the.
All right, so. This is on, on the end of. Cherokee Lane?
Yeah, I know the front.
And the picture didn't go far enough, this is a, this isn't quite the picture, but there's a parcel called Parcel I. It wraps all the way around Holiday Island and continues on north up to about here on the map. This guy's property is right here, outside the limits of the city and HICID. The, 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 the deliberation is to create a lot right here. Goes off this, because this is HICID Parcel I, and create a lot right here. So the guy can drive down HICID's streets and go across his own property onto his property.
So his property.
It's this big parcel out here. Yes. He's gonna buy a, he wants to buy a parcel of a lot that's gonna be created. And that lot being created needs a zone. So we've created this zone, cause it's too small to build anything on.
And we don't want him to build anything on.
I may have a better picture of, of the property.
You're saying you're creating a zone, this is the.
D P zone, yes.
The guys that bought the land above him can't deny him access.
But if it's a D P zone.
I just know that the district has talked to our attorney and they said. If this goes to court, you're gonna lose this HICID, you better take the deal that.
Why haven't they not?
Say he does build on that lot.
Probably doesn't have a street on his, in, through his.
Let's say, let's say he does build on that lot, or. Well, he buys a lot and that gives him access to the forty acres where he can develop.
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, we only two houses, that's what we don't want is developed.
I understand, you build two houses.
Two houses.
On that lot.
On his forty acres.
On his forty eight?
On his forty acres, he can build two houses.
He can build there.
But from the district perspective.
You're just trying to control traffic.
Yes, we didn't want him to build. Forty houses on his forty acres, and then come driving through HICID.
Well, you, what, what assessment will he pay Suzanne?
He'll pay one unimproved lot.
And or.
Four, it'll, he pays four eighty-eight a year.
Okay.
So it's, is this?
It's just more than we're getting now.
We can exclude him from using our streets if he owns that lot. To access, let's say he does put forty houses out there.
He, well, we won't sell him the lot if he doesn't agree with the deed restrictions.
See, if he, if he agrees to a deed restriction on the property and violates that, then. HICID has standing in court to prosecute for his violation. And a judge, if the language is good in the deed restriction, can force all those structures to be removed.
Yeah.
But the, the deed restriction is HICID's deal, they have to figure out how to put the language in there to make that restriction stick.
I mean, if he wants to, I don't, I don't really wanna put three houses.
Yeah, I mean, anything, anything can happen in the future, but.
Yeah.
What we understand right now is even if he sells that forty acres, the deed restriction will be in perpetuity and it goes with it. So.
So you always have the right to sue.
Yeah.
And our role in the city is the planning commission is to recommend to the City Council zoning and planning. That's why we're here talking about this and this recommendation in a resolution. So, we've got text in here to describe what that's all about. And then it goes to the City Council and they would draft an ordinance to consider to make it law.
Well, it seems to me that it solves the immediate problem and it gives you a. Zoning designation to use in the future if need be. And in order to ever use that zoning designation, they're gonna have to go through the whole process anyway, so.
My concern is the precedent that it sets. Holiday Island has lots of streets that end up at the edge of town. And property on the other side of it. And somebody says, wow, that'd be a nice shortcut if I had a little lot that could go through, and then we have all this. Other things happening. That's my concern about the precedent that it sets.
All I know is, when I was on board. Many years ago, we fought three or four of these issues. And we successfully turned them back.
Really? Well, we've been told, we, we, if it goes to court, we'll lose, and we won't get anything out of it, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know why we're gonna lose, but, uh.
Because you can't have a landlot.
He, he created it, not us, or somebody did.
Somebody did.
The, the owner of the property north of it, the owner of the property.
Wanted to create it, that's.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if he was gonna go to court, he'd go to court against that guy. Yeah, I mean, if he was gonna go to court, he'd go to court against that guy, but I, I don't mind helping somebody out, my concerns become like. Does he expect, what's his expectation during when, when we have a ice storm, you know, is he gonna? Write that as the.
But all he wants.
Well, and.
But you got.
You know, I, I, I believe in promises, but I also know that they get broken down the road and someday they'll build a third or fourth, maybe a hundred houses over there.
The guy who built the house on Pleasant Bridge.
Yeah.
He, we saw him for a long time, cause he wanted, built, when he built that house, he wanted to take a road or outrun to our road. And the guy that has a forty year, uh, what is his name? Has a hundred and sixty acres that goes down on that line. Well, you know, the end of Wild Turkey and you go up to him.
Gary or, or, Gary or, uh, Plantagen.
No. Gary Anderson, he, he's part of Holiday Island, that forty acre was the old, uh, uh. But the, the one next to that, is it Hunter or something like? Yeah. That hundred and six, there's a hundred and sixty acres, and he was trying to get, somebody before him would try to get. There was a driveway there that went into a pasture and they wanted to open that up. And he was gonna develop it, he wanted access to that property.
Yeah.
He wasn't landlocked. He, I mean, he couldn't.
Well, like I said, someday down the road when.
Someday down the road, you're gonna have a problem.
But this fellow's gone and. But essentially all we're doing is voting on the resolution to, for the designated.
For the designation.
Right.
Whether they use it or not.
Right. And I think that's a wise thing to do, to have that designation if we need it.
Well, I told the district manager, I cannot approve an application for rezoning or create the lot split. Cause it's inside Holiday Island, this parcel, and it's under the lot split piece of our planning and zoning regulations. That the city, the planning commission can't approve it because we have no zone to assign to it. I can't, can't move forward, so here's our time to create that.
So you really need something.
Mm-hmm. In order for them to split and create a lot, they need our approval as the city.
Yeah, any more discussion? Then we'll.
Read the ordinance?
We will.
Read the resolutions. The resolution, HICPC R twenty-three dash eleven, a resolution approving amendments to the planning and zoning regulations. Adding zoning district DP deficient property for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary. To revise the planning and zoning regulations for the entire area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses. For unified development for the elimination, now pause, let me read it on the screen, I'm sorry. This is worth. I know, sorry. I'll read it from the screen. For the elimination, non-conformance and other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas the Hi, HICPC has deliberated on these proposed amendments to the planning and zoning regulations since September twelfth. That's when we first introduced it. Whereas the HICPC having now developed amendments to the planning and zoning regulations to adopt and recommend has provided the. Required notification pursuant to the Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two to the. Eureka Springs School Board on September nineteenth and pursuant to the same code by publishing a public hearing notice in the Carroll County News on September nineteen. In pursuant to fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two, the HICPC has conducted a public hearing on the matter of adopting and recommending amendments. To the planning and zoning regulations on October ten to hear public comments. The HICPC now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to recommend to the city council amendments. To the text of the planning and zoning regulations to provide for the clarification terms, uses and procedures of planning and zoning for Holiday Island. Now be it resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission pursuant to fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two. The HICPC adopts amendments to the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island as detailed in the following attachments. Attachment A is six point oh one, the zoning districts established, attachment B is six point oh two, the zoning district hierarchy. Six, attachment C is seven point one two, the deficient property district zoning, the general description. Attachment D is seven point one three, a deficient property district zoning uses. Section two, pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four twenty-two, the HICPC certifies that the attached amendments to the planning and zoning regulation, regulations. Shall be adopted by the city council of Holiday Island in a timely manner, passed and approved this date. The attachments. Are in section, section six oh one, the addition of the DP name and its title called deficient property. And B, it's all new text. Excuse me, it's not either, we added in this hierarchy of DP districts at the end of HG and RW. The hierarchy, I'll explain, uh, if there's a property, um, of a higher need, like, uh, someone wants to build. They wanna build a, a single family residence and the zone wants to be changed to RW or DP. There's certain things that have to happen to protect that property from degradation by the new zone. So this change just puts it in that list, so it's considered if someone wants to do a property and make it DP. There may be something they have to do to make sure that protects the surrounding property, it helps us get through that process, that's why that has to be amended. In seven twelve, this entire section was added, so it defines it. Uh, it has characteristics that do not permit another zoning classification, including but not limited to any of the following conditions. Insufficient size, unusual configuration, lack of both water and sewer service availability or extreme topography. A insufficient size is determined by section seven oh one, seven oh two and seven dot twenty. And that talks about minimum lot sizes and widths and that kind of thing. B, unusual configuration that limits construction of residential, commercial or incidental use structure due to zoning district setbacks and minimums. All of our zones, our districts have setbacks like twenty-five feet in the front, twenty-five feet in the back, fifteen feet side yard. So those minimums are in there. Then C, a lack of water sewer lines along the property line or opposite side of an adjoining roadway. So if there's no sewer or water, both either adjoining or on it, it could qualify for this. D, extreme topography is determined by grades exist exceeding thirty percent on uplots or forty percent on downlots. As measured at thirty feet from the frontage property line in an illustration. I, you know, seven dot one three, this is the uses. So if it's a DP, a deficient property, no commercial uses are allowed, no residential uses are allowed. No structures of any kind are allowed, no storage of materials, boats, trailers, equipment or vehicles is allowed. Development of the lot is limited to an entrance to the lot over an approved culvert if deemed necessary by Heisid. And a maintained vehicle pathway through the lot with optional fencing is permitted in section twenty-one oh six. That may be constructed along the twenty-five foot setback from the back of the property line. Development described in seven, in section seven thirteen requires a building permit at zero cost. That may be approved by the silly, city building inspector. And then, uh, the last is just a change in the numbering, where I had to, we inserted two, so I had to move the fourteen. So any more questions about any, what those other sections have, I can answer them.
That last part was pretty interesting, uh. No storage of material, boats, trailer, equipment or vehicles allowed. Development of the lot is limited to an entrance to the lot over an approved culvert if deemed necessary by Heisid. And a maintained vehicle pathway through the lot is optional fencing. As permitted in section twenty-one oh six, it could be, that may be constructed along a twenty-five foot setback. In the back of the property. I'm trying to reply to what we were talking about earlier.
Okay, so you have a lot and the only development that could happen is you could put a fence on it. But it has to be a fence of a certain type that's described in section twenty-one oh six, can't put a barbed wire fence across there.
I understand.
And you can put a road through it.
So this, going back, I've realized it's not necessarily this, in regards to this, but going back to the guy that. Wants the access, he could build a road through it, which I understand. He put a fence somewhere in that lot.
In the back, on the property line, on the back?
Not at the front.
Not at the front. And the intent was to help protect the neighborhood, so the fence is back there, it's not an issue because we don't allow fences in front yards. In front of houses, so.
Right.
At the back of lots gonna be okay if you wanna fence it.
That's what I was trying to get to is.
And he can't just do it, he needs a building permit.
He may wish that he could put that in the front, somebody could block his road.
Well, I guess he can put a gate on the back fence.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, one of those automatic gates that, I'm thinking about, somebody parks. In his interest there, he's, that's his problem.
That's his problem.
His problem, just like.
He got a road.
It's like it'd be your problem or your problem, yeah, okay.
Block under your driveway.
Yeah, okay, okay.
I think it's well written.
Any further discussion regarding this resolution? And we're.
Why is it zero cost on the building permit?
Cause it's only a fence.
But we have to pay an inspector to go out there and look at it.
To make sure that it's built, um, not against twenty-one oh six. He has to, he has to bring a plan to the building inspector, doesn't have to go look at it, he just has to bring a plan, I'm, I plan to put this fence up and it's gonna be made this way, a certain way. And he'll read our, our section and go, that's okay, and sign off on it.
How much do you pay your building inspector an hour?
Uh, six hundred dollars an hour, I think, isn't that right, Ken? Okay, I don't know what we paying.
Well, I think it ought to be at least an hourly wage, one, one hour.
Well, we can recommend a cost.
There should be some cost, but if it's gonna require his time. That has to be much cost, I grant you.
You might have, you're saying a minimum?
The, the logic in, in the zero was if you wanna put up a ten by twelve shed, you don't need a building permit.
Oh, really?
No.
Oh, well, then maybe, okay.
Okay. That was the logic that I applied when I drafted this. So, you know, you can put up a thousand dollar structure and not, not have to have a permit because it's ten by twelve. Or smaller.
Well, the cost should continue to be zero if it requires no physical inspection, just matter of looking at a piece of paper, then I agree.
And again, this is our recommendation to the city council, they can draft whatever ordinance they want. If they think there should be a cost, they can change it, this is just our recommendation to the city council. Alright.
Well, we don't know what an hourly rate for the building inspector is.
It's like twenty-five dollars.
No further discussion, call the roll.
No further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Childers?
Yes.
Commissioner Dumas, aye, Commissioner House?
Aye.
Commissioner Ralph?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Bye-bye, zero-no.
Motion carries.
Okay.
But now, once it goes through the city council and gets approved, then the district will have to come and present her request.
The, the district will, um, he'll, uh, finish what he started with, uh, applying for a conditional use permit. For the subdivision of the parcel to be zoned a certain way. So we'll have him.
Have to come here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's subject to appeal, so if, if the neighbors don't like it, they can appeal it to the city council.
Well, how wide is that lot?
Uh, I think it was a, I don't have that number, it seems to be this forty-eight feet or something.
Oh, it's plenty wide that way.
A driveway.
A driveway.
Yep. But not big enough to build a house on or a shed. Okay.
Suzanne said we get four eighty-eight years, that would be a good deal.
Pretty simple, or any, or it looks good.
Okay, are we ready to move on to our next resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So we are considering resolution HICPC twenty-three, R twenty-three dash zero one two. Resolution permitting conditional use, is that right?
Yeah.
Conditional use of short-term rentals in the commercial zone C dash one. Apparently this was overlooked.
Uh, no, it's, we can talk about it when we discuss it.
Okay.
I move, go ahead.
I make a motion that we, uh, consider. Resolution HPC, R twenty-three oh one twelve.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, it's very, with a second from Mr. Smith. All of us in favor?
No, now it's time to read it.
Oh, you want to read it, okay.
Resolution HICPC R twenty-three dash twelve. A resolution permitting conditional use of short-term rentals in commercial zone C one in section seven oh five. Of the planning and zoning regulations for the city of Holiday Island. Whereas on or about October fourth twenty-two, the city council of Holiday Island adopted ordinance twenty-two dash six. To provide planning and zoning regulations, a zoning map and zoning map table for within the city. And whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, and the city council acted in good faith. To accurately record information within the city boundaries for unit block lot designations from the available declarations of res, and of reservations. And whereas on or about October fifth of twenty-three, the city received a conditional use application for short-term rental. By an interested person for property in a district zone C one, it was reviewed. And whereas the HICPC has noted that the planning and zoning regulations, section seven oh five regarding short-term rentals. In commercial district C one is currently a not permitted use. Whereas the, the C one neighborhood commercial district is defined by the following. This district, district is intended to be embedded in and serve residential neighborhoods such as home offices, some, home office uses. Childcare, small retail, service-type businesses that will not disrupt the normal and orderly development of the surrounding area are anticipated. Buildings are to be of residential character regarding outward appearance. And whereas a majority of C one neighborhood commercial districts of buildings having residential outward appearance have over time. Generally transitioned into a more residential use and occupancy rather than remaining commercial developments. And whereas the HICPC has deliberated and concluded that short-term rentals is appropriate. If approved through the conditional use application process for C one districts of residential character. And whereas the city council adopted ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen. An ordinance establishing short-term rental conditions for approval of conditional use permits on September nineteenth. Has repealed to the extent of such conflict parts of ordinances. And whereas the HICPC has determined this to be an exceptional circumstance. Necessary to revive the planning and zoning regulations, se- section seven oh five, commercial district uses table C one. To provide districts of compatible uses for uniform development for the elimination of non-conformance and other matters of general welfare of the city. Now be it resolved by the city, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, section one, that short-term rentals shall be a conditional use in commercial district C one. In the planning and zoning regulations, section seven oh five. Section two, HICP adopts the amendments to the planning regulations seven oh five. And uses table for the city of Holiday Island. And by changing that not permitted in C one to a C. Section three, HICP certifies that these amendments to the planning and zoning regulations shall be adopted by the city council. Of Holiday Island in a timely manner, passed and approved this date.
Any discussion regarding resolution HICPC twenty, R twenty-three dash zero one two?
I'll, I'll comment, the reason we're, the reason we're calling this an exceptional. Um, opportunity or whatever is because of the timeliness of the application. Uh, for this consideration, in fact, I put it on the agenda for this person for November fourteenth. So, uh, for that to happen, uh, we need to do what we need to do tonight if this is approved. And the city council will have to adopt it on their October twenty-fourth meeting for it to be timely for that November meeting. Um, I truly think it's an oversight on, on the city's part, that, uh, in our deliberations about not permitting. Short-term rentals in any commercial areas was short-sighted. Yeah, I, I.
There are C ones typically.
That's a great question. It's right here, here's the list.
When you look at the table.
This is it.
A lot of them.
It's fifty-seven.
Yeah.
But two of them are not Blue Water Circle.
Yeah.
And the rest of them are Table Rock Landing.
Oh, okay, I remember looking at this online and I was surprised that Table Rock Landing wasn't commercial.
Yeah.
It is C one. So these are all the C one properties in all the C one, uh, lots in Holiday Island. And I didn't look at these, you know, drive to buy them to see what's on La Quinta. And what's on two Holiday Island Drive, I think two Holiday Island Drive is a real estate office, right, right here?
Yes, probably so.
And two La Quintas, what, right across the street from it?
Yeah, it used to be a tall lady's office.
Oh, okay, so that's why they're C one.
Okay.
And they're residential in character, you know?
Yeah.
I wouldn't put my house there, but they're, they're not built like an office building, they're not steel construction. So, that's why that paragraph in the, that's why the whereas says, since they look that way and they're. They've trended that way, that I think it's okay to pick an exceptional.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, that's my recommendation, the city council may say, no, you've gotta have a public hearing about doing this, but.
Well, and a lot of Bluewater is short-term rental, isn't it?
I don't know.
Is it? That's what I thought, I mean, I.
There's some that are full-time residents down there.
But the, the comment is that it's not commercial, I don't see any storefronts in any of those.
Yeah.
It's all residential of some type.
Yeah.
On Bluewater. I didn't see no commercial activity happening. Other than short-term rental.
Uh, are there any? We have not permitted in C two, three, four, and.
In this resolution, no.
Yeah. Or any, is there anything that we know of in like C two or C three that kind of? Falls in this category?
This strip is C two. Does anybody live in these?
I'm suspicious about one, but I'm not gonna say.
Yeah, I, I, uh. My thought process when I drafted this was, let's keep it to C one, if the issue comes up in the future, we can address it.
I'm, I'm kinda thinking that, what, in that bank building, what used to be the Argus Bank, you know that one?
Oh, that's right.
People down there, they, they bought that and. I think, I think, I think it's kind of a park type thing, yeah. And I don't know if it's a C one or a C two, but.
Probably C two.
Probably C two.
Yeah.
And I could just see them coming and saying. We don't wanna live here full-time, but, you know. We, we want to rent for short-term rental or something like this, so I just kinda wondered about.
Yeah, so if that comes up, we'll have the same issue that it's not permitted, so our first response would be, it's not permitted. And then they would file.
They have enough parking.
And then they would be required to file a, a rezoning application.
I think they're very part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've met them once. They complained, I think, at one time about kids on.
Buses.
Skateboards and roller skating and stuff, but I don't. You know, every time I go by there, I've never seen anything activity going on, I've been at one time a long time ago.
I've never seen a car there, so that's, I was wondering where they were parking, but that explains.
Where they were when they were complaining that kids were using their skateboards on that big parking lot, they might have a.
I've seen that, I've seen that a couple times.
The kids, yeah, but I don't see that.
One kid.
Other than. Possible lawsuits, the kid gets hurt on their property.
Right.
Yeah.
And so I think they took the action of posting the no trespassing, there are no parking signs or something to, to help limit their liability.
Yeah. Anyway, that was the one that kinda came up in my mind, I'm, I'm all for this.
Ready to?
Any further discussion? Then call the roll.
Commissioner Childers?
Aye.
Commissioner Dumas, aye. Commissioner House?
Aye.
Commissioner Ralph?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Five ayes. Zero nay.
Motion carries. Okay, scheduling for our next meeting. Will be, uh. On November fourteenth at six P M in this current location. The public hearing will occur at six P M, a regular meeting will follow the conclusion of the public hearing. And do we have any special meetings that we need?
I don't think so.
Do you work, do you have any workshops we need?
Um, well, just looking into the future, the planning commission is. Supposed to be more involved in just, not just doing this kind of activity we've done in this time and last time, but. Uh, future-looking kind of thing. And one of the things that I think the planning condition, commission needs to work on is our. Uh, what's the term? It's like the grand plan, you know, what, what is the, the, the master plan, the, the whatever it's called for, for Holiday Island, so. There'll be time that we have to, you know, do some of our own research and come together in a workshop and. Um, get others involved, maybe, uh, you know, encourage the city to. Uh, start a committee that includes other peoples from other groups, but we need to work on that for, for Holiday Island. If anything, in our planning and regulations, that's the one gap that we have, that there, we don't have that master plan.
Right.
And right now, the master plan basically says, we're gonna support what was created here. But we need to move forward from that, I think. So that's something down the road that we need to explore.
So like, the next time, you said there's fourteen applications?
There's eighteen for November, November fourteenth.
And so we'll do them as a bulk, but if somebody objects to them.
There, there may be common tomatoes about a specific property that we'll have to craft separate or additional conditions to prove that one.
Okay.
But that'll come out of the public hearing if it does.
Are those available electronically, the addresses, so we could drive by and take a look at them?
Yeah, I'll, I create, I'm gonna create a brief, a commissioner's brief for every one of them, so you'll know all the information that was given to me in the application. And you can scroll through it, uh, I sent an email to each one of the commissioners about, uh, the upcoming agenda, and it has the list on it. It's the, it's the draft of the newspaper notice that went today. My deadline for publishing that was noon tomorrow, I just took care of it, got it done. So it'll, it'll run in the October twenty-fourth edition of the Carroll County News. But they are listed.
I would, uh, encourage. Future applicants to attend these meetings, because. If you put in your application and your, and the neighbors in that area. Disagree with your application, uh, it'd be nice to have you here for the rebuttal and, and the discovery of. Of information, so.
Or at least on Zoom, because I'm assuming most of these are absentee.
Yeah, this, this one was easy, but I'm not sure all the future ones will be as easy as this one, so, that's, that's my recommendation.
One of the comments that, um, was made today to me, that there is a property they haven't applied for yet, but we should deny it. Because they have eighteen bunk beds in one room, excuse me, eight bunk beds in one room, eight. And I thought, well, well, maybe the people own it and have. Thirty-six cousins and they need eighteen rooms, but when they rented out, they only put six people in it, you know? Just the number of bunk beds doesn't mean that you're renting it out to that many people.
And you have a limitation on the number of people that can be in the house anyway.
Yeah.
Theoretically, so.
So, again, we have to walk, we have to walk that fine line of restrictions.
Is what the close three.
Three per bedroom.
Three and two additional.
Yeah.
Could be on a sofa bed or something.
Yeah, so a, a three-bedroom house could house overnight eight people. Three per, no, excuse me, nine, eleven, eleven people.
And one bathroom.
And a lot of trees. You got trees.
I move that we adjourn.
Call the roll.
No, you say, I may.
Iron egg.
Oh.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. This is. This is the kind of audience we love, so y'all feel free to come back.
Thanks for attending. Now with the cup.
We do, we absolutely.